Special City Council Meeting for July 5, 2023, and it's 6:01 PM. Can we have roll call, please?
Roll call, Councilmember Roth.
Present.
Councilmember Mann.
Present.
Councilmember Soto.
Present.
Mayor Protem Samra.
Present.
Mayor, oh gosh. Mayor Moran.
Present.
Next, can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we can all please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members, please. Thank you. Council, are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, moving forward. Citizen comments: At a special meeting, members of the public wishing to address the council for any matter on the agenda may do so at this time. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the City Council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. Are there any special, any citizen comments on the phone? Any comments in the chamber? Can you please state your name for the record?
Good afternoon, my name is Mario Mendoza. I just got a few words I have to say. I mean, there's been a lot of stuff going on socially attacking people, certain people in our area, in our city. And just go to all the keyboard and phone warriors out there hiding behind the screen and phone and supporters of previous and current council members. You have something to say, please come forward in person, just like I, Mario Mendoza. I am requesting a federal state audit on all the mishandling of funds and request a state investigation of that we saw attorney withdrew as a cap. And also rumor has it that there's been backdoor deals that have been done with the developers. Have you guys had any, 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 how do I know? Accounts or anybody has made a face about all the backdoor deals we're dealing with developers on previous councils?
Sir. Sir, if you're waiting for, this is your time to provide a public comment, but it's not necessarily a question and answer between.
Okay, well, yes, and again, to all the keyboard warriors, the phone warriors out there, please come forward, just like I am. My name is Mario Mendoza. I come here and say what I have to say in person. I don't hide behind anything. And please appreciate it. If you guys want to say something or come with facts, don't be accusing people like some of the folks you guys always accuse of. Yeah, and that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Good evening, Council. I'll just say some personal comments first. Yeah, you know, obviously, they keep on attacking some of us all the time. And I think that it's good that you allow people to call in, but you don't have to. And the council can decide to cancel that because the pandemic was one thing, you know, we were, we had to take public comment under, over the phone, but you don't have to. And I think that if, you know, if they just keep attacking council members, past council members, all of us, I don't think that it should be allowed. Because, you know, if anybody wants to call and attack, they could come here in front of us. In front of us, I'd be glad to defend myself or defend any of you here in front of, in front of the public. So, you know, like, obviously, you know, they attack under Facebook, they attack over the air, and, but they don't want to be up front here because a lot of them, you know, just can't handle being in public. I go, wait, yeah, if you can speak those words or put on Facebook whatever you want, then you can be up front here and in front of us, so. And then I'll change my hat to, I have a couple of comments. As a representative for Livingston, we approved the budget for, well, the proposed budget, budget last meeting, and for, it was $1.14 million for Merced County.
It's even billion, right?
Billion, yeah. 1.14 billion dollars with a B, big B. And so we didn't think it was going to stay under over a billion, so it ended up staying, you know, with all excess money that came in from ARPA and all those, we still have there, so all those funds. So I just, you know, public, for public knowledge, we had meetings with the mayor, the city manager, and Monica, the clerk, regarding the sister city visitation that will be coming the 19th through the 4th. So I want all the council members to know that, like I said, hopefully you guys attend. We're trying to finish the itinerary for their visit. And, you know, we'll be touring, hopefully, some other cities as well, and hopefully, you know, they'll show them a good time, and hopefully, one day, you guys will be invited to be back. And it's the city of Sapo Talenque, which is a nice area, like 30 minutes away from Malahara. So, you know, they also have a Jose Cuervo Tequila Ria there, where they produce that tequila there. We also had a meeting through Zoom with the mayor, the city manager, and some of my staff regarding the spay and neutering program for the $10,000 that had committed to the city and some residents regarding starting of, started by the program. So I'm under my discretionary funds and also under the budget that we approved. I didn't use any of the $40,000 from last, from last year, and so it rolls over to this year for one year. So now I have $80,000. So out of the 80, $10,000 will come to Livingston. And, but we're just trying to finish it up because I know it's not totally clear if the board will approve it, but we're trying to make sure that we have a good verbiage where, like I said, it's something, it's public health. So, you know, that's part of, of the community, so I think it's important for everybody. And I know the city of Merced is having issues with spay and neutering also with residents, so complaints. And so I think it'll be a good program once Livingston starts it up. And if we end up needing a little bit more, hopefully, I can, like I said, if approved, I can put up a little bit more as well. So I attended yesterday the Agwater Parade. Unfortunately, I couldn't make the fireworks show last night here in Livingston. I went with family to Fowler and visited family over there too as well. And I just had an update this morning with our Public Works regarding the D Street, the D Street roads, Peach, Magnolia, and Lincoln. So hopefully, they can get started fixing those this summer, so that's all my comments. Questions?
Through the chair, may I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I thank you for giving us an update on the Peach. You know, we all know it's rough out there. Literally. I had a, I know it's not really your district, but you are supervisor, maybe you can take this back. But also, I've been constantly being pounded, I'm sure you have too. There's a small section over there on Dwight.
That's going to be taken care of.
I'm sorry, I must have zoned out or something.
No, it was Dwight, I said Dwight, which is that little piece, and on the south side too as well.
Okay, I was thinking Dwight kind of goes both sides.
Yeah, north and south of the freeway.
But there's no timeline when it might be done?
Well, they said it's Samra, I know, like I said, with so many projects around the county, I could just push them and try to get them as soon as possible.
What we'll do, okay, thank you, okay?
Yeah, they'll be using ARPA funds for Dwight, F Street, that side over there, and Peach and Lincoln. And for Magnolia, they'll be using SP1 funds.
If you guys got any extra money in ARPA, we got a couple of roads we can, you guys help us out, okay?
Livingston's getting pretty bad too.
Yeah, Campbell, you know, we can sure use help on Campbell, so.
Yeah. Any other questions, Council?
If I can just mention real quick, I know that, I mentioned it earlier a few days ago, but just so that the residents know that I'm forwarding the message in regards to that corner, that curve, north, well, on the south part of Dwight, right next to the train tracks, that turns, actually, that turns into.
Campbell, Campbell and Dwight?
No, I said Dwight, I said Dwight that turns into, towards Five Rivers?
No, F Street.
Is that F? F Street, yeah. It's becoming again a dump area for.
Oh, a dump area?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, I know it was cleaned up once before, but, you know, it's, it's.
Those are the pictures you sent me, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I'll double check again if there's continuing, and then that way I can double check. But if anybody sees anybody out there take pictures, then let me know, okay? Or call the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, supervisor.
Excuse me, Rodrigo. I know I had asked you prior, at the beginning of this year, the funds that were to go to the VFW, and you still, and I think it was about in February, you said that they were still available. It was about $380,000. When can I expect to hear more about that?
Thank you. I've actually been pushing the county on it. And it's also still on there when we approved the budget last meeting, the 325 is still on there. So they said they're in design, and so they already designed it so they can move forward and do the.
When you say they, who are you referring to?
Public Works.
Public, our Public Works?
No, county Public Works.
Oh, okay.
This is the one that does all the work, okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any additional citizen comments?
Hello. I just wanted to thank you all, council members, Ms. Soto, Mr. Samra, Mr. Roth, Mr. Mann, and of course, Mayor Protem Grupal and the mayor, and of course, the city manager, what, did I say it twice? Sorry. Did I say it wrong?
No, you thanked me twice, I appreciate it.
I know. You deserve a thank you twice because you were there.
I was there twice, I know.
Yeah, and so were you, Mr. Mayor, and you, Mr. Roth. I didn't see you, but it's okay. Anyways, thank you all for letting us hold the Fourth of July Festival. Though it was small, it was, it was nice. We, I haven't heard no complaints. I'm sure there will be, but anyways, the people that were there liked it, and although we did get a run for our money from a neighbor close to there, they did a pretty good job too. I also want to thank Ashley Maciel for helping with the vendors, the police department, thank you, chief and the police department, Public Works, the Recreation Commission, the Knights of Columbus for helping as well, and especially the Recreation Department, Jackie. Jackie and Tony, they did a great job, so thank you, guys. I think it was a good thing for the community, so thank you all.
All right, thank you. Any additional comments? Citizen comments. Okay, so seeing none, we're moving forward. I just want to take a moment, and even though it's not in the agenda, I just want to say thank you to Jackie and everyone, the volunteer out there yesterday, Mr. Valades, and everyone that participated. It was, it was a nice, nice event. It was very family oriented. I had, I heard, you know, nothing but positive feedback from a lot of attendees. And, you know, it was probably like 9:30, and cars were still coming in. Probably at least a couple thousand people out there. It was, it was nice. It was, you know, heard good things, and there was people that are coming from nearby cities. One specifically mentioned that they heard about this happening again, you know, after the pandemic here in Livingston, and they chose to come to Livingston instead of going somewhere else, and they really liked it, and they hope, they're looking forward to coming back next year. So I did, I did volunteer at the gate without knowing I was going to volunteer. But it was, it was fun. I was expecting to be there a couple of hours. I didn't leave until about, I don't know, it was late, probably like 10:30. I tried, I was trying to get away before, I needed it to help Jackie to pick up all those chairs. I did help a little bit, but I kind of hid for a little bit, but good work, I really appreciate it. And the residents really appreciate all the work. It was great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, now that you spoke publicly, may I make a quick?
Sure, go ahead.
I also wanted to add on to what you said, to have our staff, Public Works, Police Department, Recreation, there so early. I got there around noonish and went back to take a nap, I almost, but they were there all day. And I was tired, so I can just imagine how they felt. So a lot of people commented that it was a great show. Everybody thought the fireworks was going to last like 10 minutes, but it looked like it was a lot longer. So everybody felt it was longer and better. And then, and also, we have a new person that turns the lights on and off, Mr. Mann. Thank you for taking on a new task. That'll be now assigned to, as a committee member for the lights.
I appreciate that, but I was told to stand down. Jackie had.
Oh, you, oh, you guys stood down? No wonder it went so efficiently. No, but anyway, it was lots of hard work from our staff. Can't single anybody out because it was a team, honest, good Livingston team out there. Made everything happen for the people who got to enjoy what they need to do. So I just wanted to thank everybody.
All right, thank you. Any additional comments? All right, so moving forward, so we have this, next we have discussion and potential action items. Item number one, consider and discuss the city of Livingston, city councils' options for filling the city clerk position vacated by Letizia Vasquez Zorita, and take action related to filling the vacancy. Mr. Lopez?
So Mayor, I'll give a brief update on this item. At the last council meeting, June 21st, the council was, had this item before them for discussion. Part of the discussion at that meeting revolved around the responsibilities of the city clerk under the state law. That information has been provided in the backup and is included in the staff report, Mayor. With that being said, the council still does have the opportunity for providing direction on how to fill that vacancy tonight. And so we are looking for direction from the council on those specific items. In particular, it does talk about two opportunities within the government code for filling a vacancy. One, appoint someone to fill the vacancy, or two, call a special election that the council can direct tonight. So with that being said, we are looking for council direction on how to fill this vacancy, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Council, are there any questions, comments in regards to this item before we go out to public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do.
Go ahead.
Thank you. This is what I remember from the years past, about what we have in front of us here. The state ordinance, when city clerk positions, this is what they went off of, not what we were presenting with, whatever we were presenting with. And if you look at under Section 40813, 40813, it says, city clerk may appoint deputies. It doesn't say they have to do the work themselves, and that the deputies will be compensated by the city. So to say that, and nowhere in here does it say that the city council is a supervisor of that particular. Nowhere does it say that a city clerk has to have a valid California driver license or certain dexterities to be able to, none of this points to that. This is why I had such a difficult time when we did last time to put in things that were written up and then adopted without even going to the council, you know, let alone the voters, which have to have the final approval. This, right here, is what it's supposed to be, and here I can understand what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Council, any additional questions, comments? And probably if, if, if we could be more clear, or just to clarify, am I, Mr. Lopez, am I correct to, to, to say that, that previous description, that job, this previous job description was not something that is registered that came to any council? And therefore?
Yeah, so when we did, and I did my research, I know that the city attorney did research at the last meeting too, and it looks like the date that it was approved, which is typically the date that a council approves a job description. I looked at the agenda for that meeting date when it was approved, and it wasn't included on the agenda backup. So it appears to me that it was approved somehow. I just don't think that it was approved by the city council at that time. It appears that it was done administratively potentially, but we couldn't find any information of it going to the council for approval.
Yeah, and Legal can answer this. There is no way, and correct me if I'm wrong, the city council can change the duties and responsibilities of another office without going to the voters. Isn't that correct? Because ultimately, it's an elected office.
Right. There, there may be ways where you could define the duties, but I'm not sure if you have to go back to the voters to prescribe each specific duty of that role, but if it's an elected office, or it's, it's an elected office.
Yeah, because, and council does not supervise another elected position, it's the voters. We don't assign day-to-day tasks of the, another office.
It, it might not be so black and white as that, but once you're elected, you do have some independence from.
Only the, yeah, to the voters, only, the only response to the voters. We can't, we can't remove city clerks unless there's some sort of felonies or something, it has to go through a bunch. But it's ultimately, it's the voters that decide, correct?
If it's an elected office.
Thank you.
All right, Council, any? Council, any additional questions, comments, before I go out for public comment?
So noting that the job description, which Ms. Pritchard made pretty clear that we weren't putting that into the packet per se, it was the government code that was being addressed, not the job description. She only provided that as an item within our agenda packet, not to be put out to everybody. Well, it was on the job, on the, on the website, but hearing what was just said, that it was an administrative task, so back in 2020, who oversaw that was the previous city manager, which would have been Jose Antonio. So having put that out under his office, I don't know, say, if it didn't come to council, then the only person that we can be safe to say that this came forward from would have been a previous city manager.
So just a reminder, the item before us is to consider and discuss how we're going to fill this position. And, and I know that there is a very fine line, and Legal, you can jump in at any time to make sure that we're not going out of, outside the boundaries of what this item requires. And, which is for us to decide how to fill this position at this time, within the timeframe that we must make a decision, whether it is to, to appoint or to have an election. Any additional comments?
If this is the case, then why not we go with appointment, accepting nominations, and appointing someone through the process?
Okay, that is part of the discussion, and that's why we also need to.
I'm putting it out there.
Okay, so we need to go out to public comment before we can come back and provide how we want to move forward. So at this time, I want to go out for public comment. Is there any public comment in regards to this specific item on the phone? Here and done, coming back to the, to the chamber. Yes, go ahead. Yes.
Rodrigo Espinoza. You know, just, well, the discussion is, it leads to, leads to the issue of appointment or, you know, or during an election. the issue of appointment or, you know, or during an election. That's why, I, I think that the reason that the current clerk might have resigned is because the pressure that was put on her because of the demand that she had to do more. But even if, you know, in my opinion, I'm not an attorney, even, even if the council were to change the, the job duties, which it can, but it doesn't matter because, you know, she got elected, and it doesn't mean that she has to perform those extra duties because the council ultimately, that, you know, she, you know, as a policy, she came in with the, the way the policy was, had been previously and for the last 40 years. The first 25, you know, that I can remember, Mr. Campani was here for 25 years. I think he was a clerk when I came in in 2002, and the group also, as well, 25 years, all he did was come in and, and swear people in and, and sign, you know, the, the minutes and all the certificates, and that continued for all, all his years. And then Martha Nateras, I think she was here for four years, and, you know, she decided to bring it to the, to the council, and she, she wanted to sit up there and, and type the minutes, and that's the reason that her salary went, she got the council to change the salary from $25 to $100. And, you know, they gave it to her, but that was a lot of work. She didn't have to do it as an electant. Before she, I'm sorry, before she was a, before she was a, an electant, she was a, a city clerk. And then she became a clerk when, when she got elected. But, and then obviously Tony Silva came in and he was there for eight, 10 years, and so it's close to 40 years, that it's the same, that same position's been doing the same thing. And now that, that, you know, now with Letty, now she's been pushed to do more, and, but I know she's busy with her, her job as well, and she don't need to deal with the politics, and I know there's a lot of politics going on right now with all the attacks on, on the, on the current council and us. So, and they can say whatever they want, but the problem is that, you know, that I think she was filled under pressure, and, you know, sometimes you don't want to deal with, with all that stuff, but, you know, I think Letty should retract her resignation, and she can stay on there too. And she's got my support, because I think she's been, she's been doing a wonderful job. So I know the council, it's up to the council now because she turned out, let her in, and, but if she wants to, she can retract it and continue doing a great job as, as a past city clerk. I don't think there's ever been an issue, but I know the, the taxer there of, you know, because of the last, the previous council had issues, and now there's kind of like counter attacks on, on this council, and so there's a lot of politics going on, but I think that the clerk is doing a great job as well as the treasurer, and the treasurer has the same kind of policy, so I just think that, that we need to move forward and, and Letty should stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments in the chamber?
Mayor, Council, Letitia Vázquez here. I guess my question would be, if, if whatever council decides to do, how would, how would the role be, the duties, how would that be implemented, or how would that be provided to the person coming in? Whether it's what the state code says, or whether it's whatever council wants the coming in, the city clerk coming in, I think that clear communication is important because that was very difficult at the beginning for me. There was really no guidance. There was really no support. I had to seek the meeting to question or ask about exactly what I'm expected to accomplish. I did talk, as previously mentioned, I did talk to the previous city clerk, and he shared his experience. So I think that coming in, this is like, I guess, a bigger concern rather than let's putting a band-aid on it, and these issues are going to continue to happen because the job duties that were presented last time are not really realistic for someone to be able to complete, especially if they have a full-time job. So I think that's my main question, you know, how do, how is that going to happen? And I think it might be an attorney question, but how is that, how is that going to describe or how is that going to be put in place for the person coming in? So there's that clear communication and expectation, so when somebody comes in, they come in knowing what's, what's expected of them. Thank you.
Any additional comments in the chamber in regards to this item? Okay, I'm bringing it back to the dais. So, good question. Mr. López, what, what would be the duties and responsibilities of, of the incoming clerk?
I'm not an attorney or the city attorney, but I, my guess would be that the responsibility that's under the state law would be the responsibilities of the city clerk. I do believe that Christina had mentioned that the council could choose to remove or put some of those other responsibilities on other staff members, which could be done via ordinance, but I do recall the city attorney stating that if that were to be changed, that it wouldn't go into effect until the next election. I know Josh from the city attorney's office can weigh in on that a little bit more. Again, I'm not an attorney, but that would be my best guess on that course of action.
So, just to be clear and, and to make sure that I understand, so the duties and responsibilities would be the ones described under state law? Is that correct? And then those responsibilities, duties and responsibilities would be expected of the incoming clerk, of the incoming appointed clerk until, until the next election? And that is if council makes any changes to local ordinance, then that will become effective after the election of November 2024? Is that correct?
Well, once you're, once you become the city clerk, you have all the duties of the city clerk. The issue is that, I mean, many cities don't have an elected city clerk because it is a, it's a difficult position. You have a lot of responsibilities, and it's hard to just come in and execute all those duties. So there's normally departmental support, whether that be a deputy city clerk or city staffs helping out, but it would be a process after this meeting to, to come up with the division of responsibilities between the elected and the deputy, and that probably would wind up as an item back at council of spelling out what duties the elected city clerk would be and what duties maybe would be delegated to department staff. But without that guidance and without those policies in place, they come in, are expected to fulfill the responsibilities of a city clerk, but there would be follow-up actions to clarify those responsibilities if there's going to be support provided. But without a clarifying action from council or direction from council to really detail what, what deputy city clerks are going to do or what staff is going to help out with, the city clerk comes in, expected to fulfill all those responsibilities.
So currently, we do have, it is my understanding that we have local city ordinance that has certain duties and responsibilities, and then we have state law. So which one do we go by? Do we go, in this, in our case, we have to go by city ordinance?
Well, my understanding is there is no city ordinance spelling out the duties of the city clerk. You could do that, and that would be, that would aid the elected city, that would aid the elected city clerk and department staff, but at this point, we don't have one, and so the city clerk really comes in absorbing all these duties under state law and what are customarily required of the city clerk, but there is support in-house to, to provide that. But it's its own department, and it's, it's on the department to, to run efficiently and carry out its duties.
Okay, so then, also to clarify, so then you're saying that the council would be the one, be specifying what those duties are and to, to whether it is to the elected city clerk and what is, what falls to the deputy city clerk, right?
That would, I, I would believe that, that detail would be coming back to council for review.
Okay. All right, counsel, any additional questions? Clarifications?
So, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So what's been discussed previously and up until this point, regardless of, because there was not a clear-cut understanding of what this position entailed, but the gist of it overall, taking minutes, swearing in people, keeping resolutions, ordinances, and other duties as assigned, we can cover, it's like a blanket statement of what a person might view a city clerk to do. So knowing that, we have people running for that elected position, going into it, knowing that although the municipal code doesn't spell it out, but as a default, we have this, hasn't been amended since 2018, we go by this, and in the future, our job would to take from this and divvy up the, the duties, but right now, we can't do that. I mean, maybe in a year, we'll, we'll be able to do that. But for right now, this is, this is what was expected, and a person coming into the job should also have those expectations. We got almost three years in this position, and we're, we're questioning it, what were my, what were my duties? Didn't know that, so now it's too much. So all I'm saying is that there is a position. It was filled, and it was based off government code. Did the duties get done? Who'd they get done by? I mean, did they get done to the, to, what was the expectation? Expectation of our citizens that expect a documentation of what's happening with the city in a timely manner? And what we got the last time was that, just less than 10 minutes ago, it was stated that Martha Nateras, as council, came and she fought for, for it being a $25 stipend to 100 because it was something that should have taken place here on the dais, and that's what part of the previous staff report had in it, was that the person should be taking minutes at the city council meeting during it. So if that were the case, someone should have been sitting up here. Martha Nateras fought for that extra $75 per month stipend, and here we do. We do have that $100 stipend. For, for now, we have someone that does city clerk business for planning is here, but our regularly, our regularly staffed deputy clerk is usually here, fulfilling that position. Don't know if that was delegated. I don't know if that is something that should be looked into. Well, it should be. Someone needed to do the job, and our people elected somebody to do that job. So.
Thank you. So just to be fair, I think it's, it's unfair to now bring up the California law when, this is the first time that this has come up.
It's not the first.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, I'm speaking. It is the first time that California law has been brought up, and, and to my understanding, this was never brought up in the past, even, even when, when the elected city clerk asked for it. And so I don't think it's fair to be able to accuse someone of, and expecting certain, having certain expectations of someone when that was not clarified at the, since day one. You know, there were questions brought up, there were, there were, there were meetings brought up, there were meetings being done after the fact, recently, within a few months, and so to go back and say that, that this is what was expected, I, I think it's unfair. And, and so just, just as a reminder, the item before us, it's, it's, at this moment, it's not what, what, what the, whether or not the previous city clerk did or didn't do, that's besides the point at this, at this, and it's, the focus should be on how we're going to fill this position. So I just want to be able to clarify that. So if we can go back into the item before us, which is how we're going to decide to fill this position, I understand, I, I had a lot of questions, it was like, you know, for a long time, even, even, even years ago, I even asked myself, why do we even have an elected, elected position if, you know, when we have a deputy city clerk? Those were questions that I had, and, you know, whether the information was, or the expectations were not clear enough, you know, but I know as a fact, Letty did, did ask for, for meetings to clarify about the expectations, so I think it's unfair to, to go back and, and blame someone for something that, that was not there, or it just wasn't clear enough. But. Yes, go ahead.
I think that council member sort of is mistaken. It wasn't the lack of understanding about my duties, and it was more of hosting or asking for a meeting to be brought once I was elected because there was no documentation on our website before I run to see what was the duties of the elected city clerk, and that's why I contacted the previous city clerk to see if he had any insight. Now, when I was elected, I asked for a meeting where there were three city employees present, so I have witnesses, it's not meetings that I've had on the side with people, where it was stated with, to me, that the job duties of an elected city clerk are things that are done mainly by the deputy city clerk and that I am to do what I am able to do based on my employment. So it's not that I didn't understand or that I was confused, but again, coming into a position, nobody teaches you that there's a government code that you should look into. There's no training that is done for city clerks, at least I wasn't involved in any of that training. You, as a council member, seem to forget your duties as a council member, and you have to be constantly reminded of what your role is, and you expect for me to have this perfect example or, or drafting out duties. For the record, I did help draft minutes with my personal resources. You didn't call me and say, hey, do you have everything you need to implement what you need to implement? So I did draft meetings. I did attend and sign, attend, I attended every single meeting to make sure that I knew what documentation I was signing, and I wasn't just signing things blindly. I had constant communication with the deputy city clerk to see what she needed from me. Now, it's not, it's not your concern to see what I'm doing. It's not your duty. I think you should focus on your task and your duty and what you need to be implementing, that to bring something to the table, if you really wanted to create something and fix something that has been broken, why not talk about an ordinance? Why not say, how can we fix this? But your, your approach is to attack, to belittle, and to intimidate people, but you know you don't intimidate me. All the comments that you made on social media, I read them, but you know what? I don't engage because I don't care. It's not, it's above me, I'm above that. But you. But you seem to sit here and want to attack consistently, consistently, but you bring nothing to the table to fix it. What are you bringing to fix? Because you're not bringing anything to the table to say, it's broken, let's fix it.
Excuse me, can we have some decorum here in our chamber? Mr. Mendoza, I know in your past practice, you've called out citizens to want to fight them, but that doesn't work here. This isn't a battlefield.
So let's go ahead and continue with public comments as I open that up again.
Please, can you address that there be decorum in the chamber?
Well, that goes for people in the chamber and also for people on the dais. I mean, the one running the meeting. Appreciate it, thank you. So any additional comments in the chamber in regards to this item? Thank you.
In regards to this item, I was, I could be wrong, but I was under the impression that this position oversees all that, not actually does all that. So they oversee that everything is being done correctly, but not actually do it themselves, not do the work themselves. So that's why you have staff and others, and that's the way I understood it.
Thank you. Any additional comments in the chamber?
And for the record, I don't come here to attack anybody. Your phone warriors, the keyboard warriors are always attacking me. And again, my name is Mario Mendoza, I don't hide behind anybody, anybody's skirts at all. You know, you just do, all you do is just around and around the same situation. You're repeating everything all the time. That's all you do. What are you doing for the people? Instead of uniting the people, you know what you're doing? You're in your previous city council members, you divided the people. But you know what? We're better than that. That's all you do. Instead of focusing on the community, you focusing on certain people in the community. What's that about? You're here for the people. I don't target nobody. I'm not afraid of anybody. Only, I'm afraid of God. That's the only person I'm afraid of.
Thank you. Any additional comments in the chamber? Any comments on the phone in regards to this item? Okay, coming back, bringing it back to the dais, council, any additional comments, questions in regards to this item?
Mr. Mayor, if we're focused on the city clerk is supposed to be taking minutes and sitting up here, there are other things in here, like sections through 40802 to 40805, it says, you know, and if you look in there, it says, these things can be transferred to other personnel. Just like, we didn't expect our city clerk to be the accounting officer either. We didn't expect that city clerk to do all those jobs. No one focused on that. You know, it just seems like we're picking and choosing what we think that person should be doing. That office has the right to designate anybody within it. Case in point, like superintendent of schools, somebody. All those duties that fall under the superintendent of schools, it doesn't mean that person's going to do it directly. He's going to, that person's going to hire people under assistant subs, others in different areas, to do those tasks for that person. Same thing here. Accounting, we have accounting department that will take care of section 40802 through other ones. We have deputy city clerks that take care of the things that they want to do. I don't understand why we keep picking and choosing these things, you know? Now, I don't want to talk about it anymore. I think we need to just go ahead and retake the next step, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council, any additional comments or suggestions, motions? Was that a motion, Mr. Samra?
Not yet, so just one more question for our former city clerk. Now that's more clarified on what is expected, are you willing to retake the task? Please come.
I think that there's expectations or assumptions that I resigned to because I'm put in, I was put into a situation where I was pressured or I'm scared of being held accountable and other, I can't remember what other initiatives Councilmember Soto is sharing out there, but the reason why I resigned is because I recently started my own business in December, and my business grew pretty fast, and I am having to manage my business while working a full-time job. And so when I met with Mr. Lopez, I had agreed that I was going to come by and run the meetings, and Monica was going to train me to do those, those things, but I realized that I cannot commit to something that I could not do because of my job and my business. But thank you for asking.
If there are no, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to make the motion to initiate an open call for applications to all eligible persons in the city.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mayor Protem Samra. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Councilmember Roth. Roque, please.
Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just get some clarification and clarity, the council was okay with a potential layout as described in the staff report? Okay, and the application?
For, for.
Great, great.
If there was any modification, I would have already pointed it out. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Item number two, provide direction on the use of the Rexplex facility for the 5155 night event. Mr. Lopez?
So Mayor, thank you for this. As you can see in the staff report, we did have a proposal from an interested group to utilize the Rexplex facility for an event that they were hosting. We have the proposed scope of services items that they would be providing in lieu of, or in exchange of, the use of that facility. We've had preliminary conversations with the city attorney's office, as well as our risk management authority about the opportunity to do that. They have directed us to include specific language in this agreement, been advised that the MOU would be the best opportunity for this, encapsulating this, and so tonight we are seeking council direction. We didn't want to get ahead of the council to provide a direction on whether this is something that the council would like us to entertain. So the direction that we're seeking tonight is to, one, one of the three options, one, allow the foundation to use the Rexplex facility, which will require the council to adopt the attached resolution, and directing the city manager, interim city manager, to negotiate and execute the MOU, approved to form by the city attorney. The second option is to deny the facility use, or the third option is to continue the item with direction to staff to present another course of action regarding this item. I will just add some commentary on this. It's probably important to get direction sooner rather than later, because I do believe that the interested party is probably looking to solidify locations sooner rather than later. So that's the only other commentary I'll add to that. Mayor, happy to answer any questions.
Council, are there any questions for Mr. Lopez this time? Jackie, you have anything to share?
I think you've all been laying out their staff report, and if you have specific questions for Lilo or I, I'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Valdez, when is this event program for?
We were, we wanted to do September 16th.
The original date was September 16th, but that is no longer available by the state commission, so it'd be November 4th now.
Council, any additional questions?
With that just being the date, that doesn't change any of the asks that you have here in regards to using the facility? So one of the questions that I have or want to clarify, with this setting a precedent, and of course, the Rexplex is not at its capacity, not built yet, but if we're going to be allowing other agencies, outside agencies, whether they're in Livingston or in another town, would we be doing the same and setting up some type of a procedure for renting this out? Because I know that with our city facilities, we want to maximize the usability of it, and this would be one way, if this would be a future thing that the Carlos Viera Foundation would want to do on an annual basis, rather than, you know, a one-time use. So if we're going to allow this for one entity to do it, we're allowing it for everybody?
Mr. Lopez?
Great question, Councilmember. I will always prefer having a council adopted policy and procedure for these types of requests, and the absence of these types of, or a policy that speaks directly to this type of request, we do have to defer to the council to weigh in on this. So my preference is always having a policy in place when these types of requests come in. Obviously, in the absence of that, we bring it to the council, but my preferred method is always having a policy in place.
And then also for clarification, we are expecting for work to start in regards to the Rexplex in about a year or so. This is not something that, that is going to be able to be done annually, because in about a year, they're going, more or less, they're going to start doing construction for the Rexplex. Any additional questions? So, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I just got a comment. Just looking at the maintenance that they want to do for it, I just had both my shops done, and it's costly to do that, you know, especially you're looking at roll-up doors, you're looking at the electrical supplies, swamp coolers, I mean, that's kind of a big chunk of change that we don't have to worry about, so that's just my comment.
Thank you. So I'm going now for public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone in regards to this specific item? Here and now, coming back to the chamber, is there any public comment in regards to this item in the chamber? See now, I'm bringing it back to the dais.
Just a comment, Councilwoman Soto has a good point, but I see that it's a facility that can't be utilized by the city right now because its condition. So it's one thing to have a fully functional facility be used, it's another one to where it's sitting idle, someone's willing to, so that's, I think that's the difference in this. So I think that that differentiate by letting somebody else use another facility, because, you know, so I think it is, record what you're saying, but also what the city manager says that we need to see this at a case-by-case basis down the road to see how it goes. So with me, I don't have a problem with that, because like Councilmember Roth said, stuff that it needs to do just to be able to use it, it's pretty darn expensive, you more than offset any cost of renting it, if it was in a fully functional facility. So I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any additional comments, motions?
I just wanted to ask, Jackie, when it is a full functioning facility, what would it look like should somebody want to host an event? What is the capacity if, say, parking lot? I mean, I've seen some of the sketchings of what it would look like, but to host another event, is that even possible without, when it's not being used as a soccer or?
That is our hope, because we're the only huge facility that would accommodate great numbers for whatever event needs to happen between, as far as Modesto, all the way even to Chowchilla and Madera. But one of the things that I want to assure you is the REX Commission is already talking about a business plan for it, and in that, it will be the different kinds of activities, the programming, our policy for fees, so if you're a non-resident, what it would look like, if you're a resident, if you're a nonprofit, whatever. So those will all be in place once we actually have our completed project. Right now, we're just trying to gather whatever we can to keep moving forward, so.
Thank you for that clarification, and this is one of the things that I was trying to foresee and that, you know, they're already working on, so coming back to setting policies, that is going to be an option of a future council to put in place, but it's already sounds like this facility is going to be used for, to host bigger events. So like I said, doing it for one agency, I get it, this is all the startup, which is fabulous, getting this done through another agency, and then to host a big event. Thank you, Jackie.
Mr. Lopez, do you need a motion for this, or is this just direction?
Yeah, if we, if, depending on the option, if it is to allow the use, then we would ask the council to adopt the resolution.
Mayor, you ready for a motion? I'd like to make a motion to allow 5150 the right to use a Rexplex facility for a fight night event, please.
Okay, so we have a, is there any additional questions, comments? If not, we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Mann. Is there a second?
I will second it.
So we have a first and a second by Mayor Protem Samra. Roque, please.
Roque? Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 5-0.
Okay, so that's the end of our open, regular, special meeting, and we adjourn to closed session, and we'll come back after closed session at 7:03.